Six thirty PM, this is the committee of the whole Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities Committee of the whole, Tuesday, October the sixteenth, and I'll call the meeting to order. I refer a motion to approve the agenda. So, the mayor and Mr. Cameron, all in favor? All opposed? The motion is carried. Item three is disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. I have a pecuniary interest in item seven E, JRDR and County Road Two municipal drain updates. My mother and father-in-law are respondents to the JRDR issue that was before the drainage referee, and so for that item, I'll ask the mayor to just preside over that information item. Any other, and sorry, I filed out with the deputy clerk. Any other disclosures?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Item four is business arising from the previous Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities Committee minutes. Okay, we'll start with you, Councilor.
If I may, I'm following my notes, my little tacking thing here, and basically pages three, I have three questions, three, on page three of eight, there was a comment made about the James Street rail crossing, the construction and so forth, and the flow of traffic, the adjustments that were made and everything, and I'm assuming that went, everything went well, just for, just follow-up.
Yes, through the chair, yeah, everything went well.
Okay, and the other one was the, on page six of eight, the Johnstown ATV flood proof and insurance request. We had a request a long time ago, you know, we're wondering about whether they required the snowmobile of Ontario, or whether they have their own private insurance, have we had any follow-up from that group at all?
Yes, through the, through the chair, we did receive their proof of insurance, and I believe the other comment was about them kind of disassociating with the Ontario Association.
Yes.
My understanding is that they're actually hosting a three-day event upcoming, I believe, I can't remember the date now, but it's a three-day conference that they're, that they're holding on behalf of the Ontario Association.
Okay, and my third was on page seven of eight, it's the Shared Network Canada, we are to contact Shared Network Canada to inform about on open road allowance policy and get feedback on their status moving forward. Is there anything been done in regard to Shared Network, have we heard anything from them further to the delegation we had?
They were informed of those new policies, we've heard nothing from them.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback on, so, my understanding was, the way that one was left is that the property owner has to, has to sign an agreement with us, or something to that effect before, before they even get access to the road, or before they can use the road, or before they can do anything to the road?
Before they can do anything to the road.
Okay, so, but that doesn't preclude them from going in and using the road to erect their tower?
My understanding is that the road is not in good enough shape for them to be able to bring equipment in there that would allow them to do that, but any, any changes or upgrades or clearing, for that matter, that's required, they have to have permission first.
Okay, so then, so we're waiting, basically, for the property owner to sign our agreement?
That's right.
And that hasn't happened, and we haven't heard anything from either part?
Yeah.
Any other, Mr. Rising? Councilor, Deputy Mayor? Okay, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I did have one more, which is on page four of the, concerning the Walker Street extension. So I believe as this was left, we had authorized the staff to negotiate the contract extension for the Walker Street project. So, did that negotiation get completed without any additional change orders? I use that as a question.
Through, through the chair, it is close to being completed, and it will, it will include a, a change order that will describe the, the requirements that need to be, need to be met.
Through the chair, will there be a cost associated with the change order? I mean, are, are they going to give us a credit? Are they going to be looking for dollars?
There will, the change order does not have any, any incentive or punitive damage.
Okay, and then, also through the chair, the Walker Street project itself, my understanding was that last week they were to put a second crew on, did that happen, and is it their intention now to continue working on the sub, on the subsurface infrastructure until they're forced to stop by weather, or are they just going to come to the end point that's been negotiated and drop the project until next spring?
The second crew did mobilize on Friday, and their plan is to work as long as they can on the, on the underground, hopefully get that completed, and as much as the, of the sub bases as possible.
Okay, so work is still progressing?
Work is still progressing.
Okay, thank you, so those are my questions.
Okay, thank you very much. This evening, we don't have any delegations or presentations, and no items listed under discussion, so move item seven A, and that's the third quarter fire report. I'd like the chief to highlight any notables from this report, and then we'll ask the committee if they have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, a very, very busy quarter in the fire column with twenty-one. Looking through the calls we did have, I don't really see any trends. We did have two structure fires that were caused by smoking materials, but other than that, six vehicle fires, and a bunch of, we were just, just plain busy. The fire losses are listed there. Under training, some significant happenings in training. On October the fifth, they repealed the firefighter certification regulation that we've been working on. They indicated the new regulation posed significant challenges, which it did under the timelines that they had imposed. Also written under there, we did have a very successful new recruit program developed by Captain Bedore in Cardinal. It, it was twelve sessions long, and it basically gave, gave our recruits the basic skills to be able to respond to a scene and, and work safely exterior on a structure. It went over very, very well, and looking forward to good things from those new people. We did have some firefighters at the college, one finished firefighter part one C, firefighter one part C at the college, Captain Bedore finished fire instructor one, and Rob Belton finished his fire and life safety educator two. Fire prevention activity, there was a group home inspection completed in Cardinal, we have some court actions ongoing, a fire drill at tunnel transport, and a meeting with the Electrical Safety Authority, and our activity at the bottom was just our regular fall activities with Labor Day and Spencer Fair.
All right, well, thanks very much, Chief. So we'll see if the committee has any questions, we'll throw them around the table. Mr. Cameron, any questions?
Nothing good to report, Brian, thank you.
Same thing, it's nice to see how progressive your department is.
Thank you. Councilor Schmitt, Deputy Mayor?
Just to clarify, the not found is when you couldn't find what they were, somebody was directing you to, that category, and seeing that, that you've added the stand down and standby, the stand down is quite interesting, and that ten is a pretty big number for, for that area, it's good to see it being counted, I think it'll come in handy in future analysis. The question I have, though, is with respect to the Ministry of Community Safety and Correctional Services, any idea what's coming down the pipe to replace it?
Through the chair, they're, they're, they're looking for input once again from, from all the players, like they did before the, the regulation came out, so I would suspect at some point, the regulation will come back with some more realistic timelines.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I was your mayor.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at the same thing about community safety and correction. So the, the regulation that was suspended, is that the regulation where you required to meet that NFPA standard?
That is correct.
Okay, so, and, and when they suspended, did, did they give any other comment other than just saying, other than a reference to the, to the short timelines?
Uh, no.
Okay, so that was basically a timing thing?
I believe so.
Okay, a couple of other questions, if I can, through the chair. The fire losses that we see on the bottom of page one and carried up onto page two, are those fire losses just for the quarter, or are they for the year-to-date?
They are just for the quarter.
They're just for the quarter, okay, so fairly significant during the quarter then. And there's a question, I also had a question on the bottom of page two, two training sessions were done in the abandoned house on Glen Smale Road owned by HFI. So, were those training sessions devoted to work on the interior?
That is correct.
And then, was the end result that the abandoned house gets removed, or destroyed?
I know HFI are planning on, on taking down the house, we're kind of looking at some possibilities to utilize it for training, but the house will come down eventually.
Okay, but we didn't leave it insecure or anything like that?
That is correct.
Okay, and, I think, the, back to the first page, where it says assistance not required, so in the quarter, we had eight of those, where I'm assuming we responded, but we weren't required to be there, were they all four hundred series highways?
Through the chair, off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I would, I would think a portion of them would have been motor vehicle accidents, and probably medical assists would be the other one, where EMS beat us there on scene, we arrived, they say, if everything's good, we don't need you, so we return again.
Okay, so it could be other than four hundreds?
Yes.
Okay, and then down on the, the heading called not found, I had the same question, were they four hundreds?
Through the chair, not all of them, I know we had a medical assist call in Cardinal, but we couldn't find.
Oh, seriously?
Yes. But I would think the majority would be, would be four hundred series.
Four hundred series, okay. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor.
Yes, thank you, I just, looking, I guess, looking at the totals and the numbers and going across, going vertically and horizontally, the, the numbers tend to be increasing, and when you look at like calls in the quarter, we got sixty-three compared to last year's fifty-two, and I know a lot of these you can't plan for, they, they happen, but I see in, in four areas where there's been considerable, like even after third quarter, you're, you're higher, they're higher than they would be in the total in four quarters in, in the previous year. For example, I'm looking at fire and smoke, we're right now at thirty-six after three quarters, and last year was twenty-seven, so to me, that's considerable. Burns complaints, we're up to, what, eleven compared to six. Public assistance, you're, you're up there considerably, I think, fifteen total for the year, and we're already at, at what, eight and nineteen, and assistance not required, that's not, but, and then canceled on route, we're down, which is a good sign, to me, a positive sign, that there's, there's many less, two compared to eleven, not eleven, but three, the total of fourteen, so I would think that that's going to end up probably in a positive gauge, but it just, like, it's obvious you folks have been, been busier, it's, it's, you know, for whatever reason, and, you know, when you get a house fire, and one of the total damages is five hundred thousand dollars, that's, that's a considerable hit within the community, so I just, I just wondered if there's any, if there's any kind of, is it, assessment you can make, or just off the top, why, why these things seem to be increasing, when hopefully people are more fire conscious, I guess, or, or they just rely on you more than, than the emergency services of the, of the county side, you know? I guess that's my question.
Through the chair, I, I've given it some thought, but I, I really don't, especially the fire calls, I can't, it's strange to have six vehicle fires in, in three months, that's a lot. Obviously, the structure fires, that one night, we had the two at the same time, and then it's just some, some very strange calls, like lawn mowers and, and a trailer where somebody was trying to light the oven, and like there was a malfunction, you know, like it's just, it's just been a weird quarter, I don't think there's really any trend.
You know, my pet peeve has always been brewing complaints, how, are, are they being called in, or are they being spotted, or how is it, is it still on a complaint basis?
Mostly.
And are they in the villages?
Through the chair, yes, but I, I'd say more come to the office now, now that I'm there full-time, I'll get a phone call in the office and deal with it.
The fire prevention activity, I just, the one that kind of struck my attention there was the very last bullet, when you said you met with the Electric, the Electrical Standards Association regarding outstanding electrical fire safety orders, so there's obviously somebody that's not being compliant, and it's kind of, it sounds like it's ongoing, is there any progress being made, or how do we, is this going to end in sight?
Through the chair, we, we do finally have some, some movement by the owner, so we're, we're getting there slowly.
Okay, and the other one was that, and I thank the deputy clerk for sending that page that we had a chance to look at, was page, page two that kind of got misplaced. You had some meetings with various individuals, like, one of them was the new group, Greenery and so forth, you met with them, does everything seem to be going according to oil or plan, and, and should be any problems, like, you know, it's, it's not new and exciting, or any dangers that we might possibly foresee that we haven't had encountered before? Is it, how did, how did that?
Through the chair, it was, it was very preliminary, it was like the site plan agreement and such. Obviously, there's hazards there with a large quantity of flammable liquids, but we, we have similar in, in the township already with greenfield ethanol, so our engineers are working on, working on their systems.
Okay.
It'll be good.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to come back.
Sure.
Through the chair, one, one more question, just looking at your call types there, fire false alarms, and so we have twenty-one to date compared to twenty-three all of last year. My question is, are we any, do we have any chance or possibility of getting to the bottom of the source of these false alarms? Are they originating in one of the villages, are they widespread? False alarms bother me because, number one, they create a, they have a bad effect on the overall department, but also it takes volunteers out of their homes. Can you give us any kind of comfort level as to how we might be addressing false alarms?
Through the chair, really, with the false alarms, other than the larger, like a company, like an industrial people, I mean, we, we have, we have a way to, to charge them if, if we get too many calls, but for the homeowner, I guess we have the same thing for the homeowner, but generally, like we have with the port over the winter, we had, we had multiple issues with, with their alarm system, and it has been fixed. We do have another, another bad apple that we had quite a few calls on this summer, but usually it's just cooking, cooking toast, the alarm goes off, and, you know, the security companies are so efficient, they've got us paged out before they can get a hold of the homeowner.
So, and I, I remember the reference to the port, I think we had three or four there, was the other bad one an industrial one?
I guess.
It was, and the same kind of system, problem where the system was going bad?
It seemed to be that they would not, they would forget to notify their alarm company when they worked on the system.
I see. Okay, so that accounts for a group or a, a class of them? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate that, appreciate your work. So move on to item seven B, and the CAO informed me that our facilities manager was called away to a personal emergency, so he's not going to be speaking to his report for this evening, but I'm sure if we have any, any burning questions that staff here can, can help us out with them. So, Madam CAO, did you have anything that you would like to, to highlight from the third quarter facility maintenance report update?
Not particularly, thank you, Mr. Chair, it's, it's, you know, business as usual, basically, you know, we're, we're continuing to do good maintenance on all, all the facilities, and of course, this quarter reflects making sure that we have ice in our arenas.
All right, so, keeping in mind that the facilities manager is not here to take the questions, are there questions for the CAO on the report? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
So I had, basically, two, and centering on the pools, and the sub center, first of all, the issue of the, I think they're called the outdoor washrooms at the sub center, I think you'll recall the pictures that, that I sent, have those, has the problem in those washrooms been addressed, or is it a spring project?
It's a spring, through the chair, it's a spring project, Mr. Mayor, the washrooms are locked.
They are locked, okay, that's the first question, and then through the chair for the second question, so, on the, again, on the question of the pools, we worked, tried very hard to get some kind of a solution so that the senior folks could get out of the Cardinal pool, and we know that there is a problem there, and my understanding is that the, the problem is to be addressed through some sort of a, of an addition to the pool, corner steps to be, to be put in, in, in the spring. Now, so my question is, have we started the work that's going to be required to get the, the tendering done, to make sure that that project is done early in the season before those pools are open?
I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to that, Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming that Mr. Spencer will have that done in a timely fashion, as far as tendering goes. It's not going to be a huge job, I don't think, you know, it will be in the thousands of dollars, so I don't think it'll be in the tens of thousands, I suspect less than ten thousand.
Yes, but my concern was that it's, my understanding is that it's a kind of specialized work, and that there are only a limited number of companies that do this kind of work, and I just wanted to be sure that we've got our request in early enough that we don't get a postponement, because the, the companies that are supposed to be able to do the work aren't available.
Got you.
So those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Anything else yet, Mr. Cameron?
Yes, just under, under parks, and I don't see the, I don't see on the, here, I'm just wondering about the new park in, in Cardinal, how it's, is, is it expected to be completed before the snow flies, or before we can't do any work on it, or is there anything regarding that to report?
We're talking about the corner green space?
Yes.
Don't use the word park.
Sorry, 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 sorry. It has been referred to as park probably seventy-seven times last week, so.
Vacant commercial.
Okay.
I believe we're done for the season, we, no? Where are we at? Perhaps the director of operations could tell us that.
Through, through the chair, there's, there's a few more items to be completed there, which I expect will be done in the next week, the two weeks.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I will never refer to it as a park again.
Thank you. And any, anything else on that, folks?
I, I just want to, I want to comment on, like I saw a lot of positives when, you know, the inspections of TSSA and motor arenas, and, and various things that have been accomplished and finished, and the one thing I want to draw attention to, of course, is quite noticeable in, in the community of Johnstown, is that parking lot, that's been redone and so forth by the sub center, that's quite, it needed it, and it's, it's, we're, we're receiving, we receive benefits from them, so that's, that's quite good, so I just want to commend everybody for their support and the good work.
All right, thank you, thank you for that. So we'll move on to item seven C, and that's the third quarter recreation facility staff report, and I'll ask the CAO if there's anything that she'd like to pull out of that report for comment.
Some things that we hadn't tracked before, that we are tracking before now, the down hall upstairs and different things like that, I think will, I think it's a good idea to see what that use is. We did see somewhat less use this summer because the yoga group chose to do their summer program at the mill instead of at the down hall, which was just a change of venue, but on the whole, I think we're seeing a better uptake on our facilities, and I think our recreation coordinator's working hard to make sure that community outreach is in place that we had, didn't have before for, for programming, and making sure we know who, who's offering what, making sure those facilities are available. Other than that, I don't have a lot to say about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any, any questions for the CAO on the recreation? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. So, at the bottom of the third page, there's a note here, please also note that there were more families interested in the day camp, however, due to the lack of subsidies available for the day camp, they could not afford to send their children to camp, another factor that impacted enrollment was the decrease in camp support from Making Play Possible, which has been a huge help in the past for families within the community. And I guess my comment is, I just don't like to see kids or families being turned away from the camps because of lack of subsidy support, and I'm just wondering if there's some suggestion from staff as to how we might deal with that on the next go-round, especially since some of the subsidies seem to come from that group called Making Play Possible, are they out of the business now, or what happened that, that they were not able to participate this year?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't know, I don't have a good answer for you, and I, I'm, you know, always out reaching and looking for ways to make sure that people can access those programs, but I don't, I don't have the answer for it.
I know we talked with this group at county council, and I'm trying to remember, and I can't, whether, whether, this is one of the groups that's coming to the end of their subsidy period at the United Counties, and if it is, then, you know, we're seeing the effects here, and perhaps we should try to, to deal with it in another way. Okay, I'm going to just try to remember, remember that one thing. And one last question, when I'm looking at the last page, the boredom, bustard, day trips, it looks like this year there were only a total of a hundred and forty-two participants in the trips, and that compared to two hundred and eleven last year, which is fairly significant drop. Do we have any kind of a feeling or an explanation as to why there would be less participants there? And the numbers from the camps seem fairly significant, fairly, fairly comparable.
Through the chair, I believe, from my understanding, one of the things that happened was that we decided to just use one bus, and there's a limit to how many kids you can fit on the bus, plus you've got to have all your chaperones and stuff with them, and as well, I think the weather was poor on the days that the, those trips were planned, and often you get people waiting until the last minute to sign up in case the weather's bad, I mean, nobody wants to go to a water park in the middle of a thunderstorm, so I think it's just bad.
Or when it's forty-six degrees.
Right.
So probably the big thing is the, just using one bus thing, so.
So if you can't fill two.
Yeah, you end up with one and a half.
Yes.
Because they're like six hundred bucks, what, six hundred bucks a pop?
I don't, I don't know what the cost is, but yeah.
Okay, that was it for you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor?
Can I just get the, the two reports added to the recreation committee agenda?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, folks? Okay, so, if you could flag for Mr. Spencer. Okay, um, so, um, if you could flag for Mr. Spencer, uh, just the mayor's question, uh, regarding subsidies and just options, uh, you know, whatever, whatever organizations, um, through his network and through the recreation coordinators' network that have, outreach has been, has been conducted with and, uh, we'll see that question back in, uh, in November then. So we'll move to item seven D and that is the public, sorry, the operations, uh, third quarter report, there it is. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, basically finishing up, uh, most of our late summer, early fall activities and preparing for our next season of, of winter. So, uh, highlights, we do have our winter salt and sand loaded into the domes, uh, our gravel roads have been graded, uh, for the fall in preparation for the winter and, uh, we completed our second pass of the roadside mowing.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the third quarter, uh, operations report? I'll start down here. Uh, Mr. Packwood, Counselor, Deputy Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Um, a couple of questions not pertaining directly to the report. At the, uh, at the depot on near Pittston Road, there was a pile of, um, material, I think, taken for ditching and that pile of material seemed to disappear one day and then, uh, a few days later it was back again. Can you tell me what was happening from an operations point of view there?
Through the chair, I'm, I'm not sure I can completely answer that, um, other than I know that we, we did remove some to, to build up the berm, um, along the, the Pittston Waste Disposal Site. So, unless, uh, weather was, was poor, that if they were doing ditching activities that they, that they unloaded at the Pittston shop, uh, to avoid going into the, uh, into the waste disposal site because the, uh, the, the area wasn't solid enough.
So is the, um, the material that's going into the Pittston Road Site now, is it from the current ditching program?
Uh, there, there, there has been some, yes.
Because did we, the reason I'm asking that is that I thought that we had adjusted a policy, uh, where instead of bringing that material back to the central location, we're going to try to dispose of it in the localized area where the ditching was being done.
Through, through, through the chair, yes, and, and, and most of the time we do.
Okay, so this is just residual?
And, a- as I said, I'm not one hundred percent sure of that, that circumstance. It, it would seem strange to me that we would have removed and, and then brought back in a, in a couple of days, but that's, that's the only thing that makes, um, sense to me right off the, right off the top.
Um, so I'm gonna let pass for a minute and I've got a couple more questions.
Sure, Counselor Row.
Yes, I, I did, I see the leaf and brush pickup that are running again in, in November and, uh, I think that's a positive step. I know, I know I personally use it and it's, it's, uh, suits person, our family personally well. Uh, I, I know there's a good uptake, I think in Cardinal there were some, I think in Spencaville there were concerns about not, not as much as we thought. I can't recall the spring numbers, but they were, were they better? Like, you know, we're getting more response from Spencaville, the north, the north end, uh, now?
Um, through, through the chair, typically Spencaville seems to be the, the lowest, the lowest uptake in this program.
Okay, and the other thing I have, uh, I noticed there in the waste disposal, again, uh, the third bullet down, the punch cards sales through the library, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, at one time there was concern about, you know, the transfer and this, has this and everything been smoothed out? It seems to be running cold pathetically or is there any other flies in the ointment, shall we say, at any time recently?
Through the chair, it would appear that, that things are running smoothly, uh, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, okay, thank you, Danny.
Great, okay, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
And so if I can pick up on that same, uh, point, the punch card sales at the site, six twenty-four fifteen, uh, which indicates to me that we're still handling cash at the site, I can't imagine where the fifteen cents came from, but, uh, I thought the concept was to get away from cash at the site.
Uh, through, through the chair, uh, yes, ultimately, but I, I certainly, um, one of the concerns that we brought up, I, I believe at the last quarterly report was, uh, the fact that if somebody is showing up there on, on Saturday morning, do, do, do we force them to go to the, to, to the library and then back to the site for, you know, if, if they have a load? Um, however, I do certainly see in this quarter that there has been a little bit of an elevated increase and that we don't wanna see it trending back, uh, too, too much farther.
Um, through the chair, we made, um, efforts to, um, kinda reinforce the, in, in a public sort of way, uh, to the public that we're not, that, that, that the punch cards are gonna be required. We have.
Oh, yeah.
So some people are still not getting the message, they're showing up without the cards, we're accommodating them and understand accommodating them because otherwise it gets loaded in the ditch, uh, awkward situation, I understand it. Uh, just would encourage staff at all levels to, to work on the problem. Um, if I can move on a little bit?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, on page three or four, I'm looking at the prisbeam chlorine residuals. Um, because the residuals were there and they seem to be well within the compliance range, it triggered my mind as to prisbeam's usage. Uh, do we have a good handle now as their usage pretty much back to what I would call the normal levels before the problem? Uh, and, and the second part of that question is, uh, have we got a good handle on what our annual, uh, take from the Prescott contract will be?
Yes, through, through the chair, for the, for the first question with prisbeam, it seems to be back to, uh, what we would have considered, uh, pre-problem, um, flows, uh, at, at that location. Uh, our, our Chief of Operations is, uh, sending prisbeam reports on a, on a fairly regular basis so that they can also track their, their usage, uh, a little bit more to, to avoid, hopefully, uh, that we don't have another reoccurrence. And, uh, with respect to the Prescott wastewater treatment plant, we have, uh, we have the updated flows, I can't, uh, recall if they're up to September or if, if it's August and we are trending, um, similar to, to previous years.
The reason I'm asking that is because now we have John Tiger fully up and running, we have prisbeam back to normal, uh, I'm wondering if we could get a report at the next meeting that will kind of, sort of tie this whole thing together, uh, to give us some, uh, confidence that we're, that we're within our contracted levels and also to give us some indication of what our, uh, future capabilities might be on, under that, under that agreement. And I have one final comment, if I may. This came up a number of times during the campaign. Is there some way that you could get us, based on, uh, twenty-eighteen contract, a cost per kilometer of hot road mixed pavement versus the, the other types of, of treatments that we do? I know we didn't do any surface treatment this year, but I'd like to have a comparable, if I could, from twenty-seventeen, unless you can find another source of, uh, what a kilometer of surface treatment would cost. And really, I know you'll have to make some assumptions there about what, how, how well is the road base prepped before the, uh, before the treatment is laid down and what exactly is in the contract, but I'd like to just try to get an order of magnitude, uh, the difference between, uh, the full hot mixed pavement, the surface treating and the micro surface treating.
For November?
Yeah, for the November meeting, yeah.
And that's road kilometer or lane kilometer?
Uh, yeah, low, lane kilometer.
Okay.
Yeah, lane kilometer.
Lane kilometer?
Yeah. Or if it's easier, road kilometer because, I mean, I think your widths are the same, are they not?
I think we usually do that by the square meter, do we know?
Uh, each, each one's a little bit different, depending on the treatment that you.
Well, that's why I don't want you to go to a lot of, you know, because I think the orders of magnitude are fairly, will speak fairly, uh, clearly for themselves.
Committee, yes, committee satisfied with that request to come forward, uh, through government meeting?
Yes, if I, if I may, if I may just add to that, through the chair.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, to, to help, if, you know, maybe the director has already thought of that, that there was, uh, a presentation he made about the various types of paving from Minnesota or something like that, or maybe it was some kind of imperative and that might, might alleviate some, uh, testment searching and so forth. Anyway, uh, may I just, uh, continue on then?
Yep.
Okay, um, I just, I wanna, again, this, the environmental services report, excellent. I, I, we're, we're so fortunate to have a, a staff that's, uh, on, on top of things and not only reaches minimum standards for those beyond, lights and looking after the safety of our residents in Cardinal and in the, uh, industrial park. Um, I, I just, there are so many good things, I, I, on that report, I, I just wanted to highlight, and for those of you that may be in the audience and not aware of it, if you just look at the, uh, page three or four, the, the last, the last areas, one of them that the mayor referred to is the quarterly averages and so forth and how much, you know, they're, they're always above and beyond, you look at that last, those last three columns, greenfield, prisbeam, pressure P S I and so forth. And then you go to page four and you look at the very la, uh, you know, last, last two charts, it's, you know, to me it's phenomenal, the last two, yeah, charts and columns, July to September and you look at, at the top, they're plus, you know, the average and so forth compared to the objective and compliance down below, just pauses all, all the way across. I guess it's a teacher to me coming up, you know, it's like a gold star, you know, for what, what they do. And, uh, I just, I'm very appreciative and I know, I, I know it's easy to give some places, but I, the people there have a very important job and, and water, uh, safety is, is, is key. And the only thing is, if I, I guess, I'm being my teacher again, I'm showing all the positives and now I'm saying, now, that's, there's one area I'm gonna look at and just ask you, there was one, uh, on page, uh, three or four, if you look at that, uh, the second column, under three point one, that second column where it says summary of operations, am I reading this correctly, where it says U V transmittance, it says, uh, the compliance is forty and the average that came out was forty-nine point seven eight. I'm assuming that's, you'd like it to be either forty or lower, would I be correct in that?
Through, through the chair, that's one parameter that you want to be higher than forty.
You want to be higher than forty? Okay, great, greater than, okay, so that's a, that's a positive, it's not a negative. I was, I was misinterpreting that. I stand corrected and I thank you kindly. I just, uh, so you get, uh, you get an A plus because there are no, no negatives, uh, I'm not gonna take a star away, okay, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to item, uh, seven E and that's the J R D R County Road Two Municipal Drain Update and I'll just ask the mayor to, um, to proceed with that.
Okay, so the report is in front of everybody, there's no recommendations, um, it's just a, um, an information report. Are there any questions with the information report?
Do we have any verbal updates? I mean, it happened yesterday, so I don't, I don't expect anything writing for a while, but.
Well, did the meeting take place?
Yeah, but how did it go and what did it say on each case?
So with respect to the, the J R D R, um, we certainly, uh, the, the drainage engineer did attend those three sites. Just viewing, they'll, they'll send their survey, uh, crew to, to do more details, uh, in, in the near future, um, but as far as any more additional timeline, I, I don't, I don't have anything more on, on, on the J R D R. County Road Two, we, we, we had a good meeting with Robinson Consultants and United Counties of Leeds and Grenville, just, um, uh, reviewing the municipal drain process. Robinson Consultants needs to follow up a little bit, uh, we're kind of in, in a, um, a, a delay mode with, with some respects on defining the, uh, the catchment area because, uh, as of yet Robinson Consultants haven't been able to, uh, to, to get access to, to, to walk the C N, uh, line from C N, they're still, uh, working together with C N to get that and until, uh, they have that area surveyed, they, they, they won't be able to firmly establish that, that catchment area.
Thank you.
Other questions going back this way? Well, is, um, they feel that they need some permissions from C N?
Uh, they, they do require permission from C N to be on their right of way. I, I, I believe that, uh, that they, they may have had, um, been spoken to in the past, not on this project, but another one by C N police for being in there right of way.
So is there some hesitation on the part of C N or do we, do we read that into the report?
I, I, I don't read that into the report, I think they're just a big, uh, company.
Well, yes, why?
If I may?
Sure.
We have suggested that perhaps Mr. Jones will have a contact that Mr. Robinson could, um, speak with at C N.
So does the mayor.
So we've, we've given that information to Mr. Robinson.
I just don't wanna see C N, uh, foot dragging on this, if I can put it that way. I know they're a big company and I know they like to throw their weight around, but this is not where that's gonna happen. Okay, um, so if there's no other questions, um, I'm gonna just move on to the next item on the agenda, I think, uh, Counselor Barrett is on his way back to the table. Um, so Counselor Barrett, uh, you, you wanna?
No, good.
You okay?
Yep. So, uh, item seven F is the urgency, you know, responsible operator. Overall responsible operator for the Bennett Street well supply and there's a recommendation here. Moved, it's moved by the mayor and seconded by Counselor Morell. The committee recommends that council adopt a bylaw to authorize staff to execute the memorandum of understanding with the United Counties of Leeds-Grenville to perform third alternate O R O duties for the Bennett Street well supply. Uh, are there any questions for staff? Okay, um, all in favor? All opposed? And the motion is carried, thank you. So item seven G is the water and sewer charges for seven one seven Benson Street and there's a recommendation. Is there a mover for the recommendation? Uh, Mr. Cameron and a, a secondary, Mr. Packwood? That recommendation is that committee recommends that council direct staff to develop a reasonable payment plan without interest charges for owner to pay off the bill. Um, so the briefing note, uh, speaks to the issue, are there any questions for staff? Deputy Mayor?
Uh, we had a similar issue very early on in this period and, uh, was a, was a similar option offered? Or are we setting, uh, I'm, I'm okay with this, I think it's fair, we're gonna get paid what's owed and bottom line is fine, but is, I just wanna make sure that this can be repeated without any issues coming up and that it's, someone else is gonna come forward and say, they didn't do that for me, why'd they do that for you?
So.
Through, through, yeah, so, through, through the chair, uh, I, I believe the, the, the situation you're referencing, it was a very similar recommendation at that time.
And the only divergence we've had from that, uh, at this committee has been where, um, you know, an exterior water source was left on, right, and then the owner didn't wanna pay, uh, wastewater charges on top of their water charges because the water wasn't treated, correct? That was, that was, that was the situation and that's how that situation is different. But we did have a similar situation to this and a similar recommendation.
No, I think it's a fair, a fair response.
Okay, I, I just have one question, um, and I'm gonna support your recommendation, that's for sure, because as near as I can recall, we have not wavered on this at all. Um, but my question is, did we, um, review with the owner the R S L readings, um, and do the, do the manual calculations? The reason I'm asking that- The reason I'm asking that is that it appears that it was around... It was only about a month-long period of a leaking toilet, and it seems to have resulted in, is it six thousand dollars?
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred dollars? This seems like a lot, and I'm just wondering if, if those calculations could be duplicated manually, or did we make that effort, or is there any poss, is there any possibility that there was a, I guess the question I'm asking, is there any possibility that there was a, an arithmetic error here? In this chap's bill?
Through, through the chair, no, the, the report was, was provided to the, to the homeowner, and staff has also reviewed the report to determine that the, that the quantities are valid.
Quantities are valid.
Anything further?
I guess just one other point.
Go ahead.
Okay, I guess the other point that I wanted to make is that the, in, in a way, and I'm looking at this chap's letter, and he makes the point, since the water was not being used for sewage, it did not have to be treated. But that's a wrong assumption.
Yeah.
It does get treated.
Yeah.
It does get treated, so. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't lost in the discussion.
Yep, fair, fair point. So with no further questions or comments, all in question, all in favor of the recommendation? All opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Item seven H is the Connel Municipal Drain, and there is a recommendation here as well. Is there a move for the recommendation? The recommendations, that committee recommends that council accept the recommendation of the drainage superintendent to perform the necessary work required for section seventy-six of the Drainage Act and direct staff to tender for engineering services. Is there a move? Councilor Smale, is there a secondary? Mr. Packwood, thank you, Councilor. And questions for staff? Deputy Mayor?
So I just wanna be sure we're not gonna run into.
Wrong.
Similar problems that we've hit with others, other, other instances. So the drainage superintendent has just, has, has identified the, the work. Now, is that, is this the proper role? Because we've run into this problem where the drainage superintendent has done something, and then a tribunal has said, no, no, you needed an engineer for that. So we're starting at the beginning with this one, or are we in the middle of something?
Through the chair, with the, with the background that, that has been provided, we started about a year and a half ago, as, as this as our test case, because it is a smaller municipal drain, where we could provide some public education to, to, to those owners on what a municipal drain is, and what, what their duties and responsibilities are. We did host that public meeting, and it certainly is one of the duties and responsibilities of the drainage superintendent, to inspect that drain and bring back recommendations to, to council.
And so to the deputy mayor's point, is the recommendation being made by a tech or by an engineer?
The recommendation is being made by our drainage superintendent, that at this particular stage is a professional engineer.
Thank you. Since that's how I started my question.
Okay, and so the owner, the homeowners, the dr, the benefiting users of the drain will all be notified of, of the work to be done, and, and have it, have they, have agreed to, or will receive a document which will require them to agree to, sharing the costs of whatever work is in?
So to, to answer that question through, through the chair, the, the process needs to start at developing the assessment schedule, because there has been changes in use. In particular, the, the subdivision where the fire, fire hall is now was agricultural, it is not agricultural now. There's many subdivided parcels. So the first stage in, in anything is to, to update the assessment schedule to reflect what's there now, and at that, that stage, definitely all of those owners will be notified of, of that assessment schedule and those changes. So that there will be an appeal process if, if they're, if they're not happy with their new assessment.
Okay, so the, so work, work, you have a, accepting, performing the necessary work required under section seventy-six. So the section seventy-six is just basically going in and identifying what work has to be done? Is that, because these people that are living or benefiting from that drain, at this point in time have no knowledge that they're near a drain that's gonna be worked on?
All benefiting owners on that drain are aware that they're on a drain, because that letter was sent advising them of the public meeting that took place a year ago, that discussed the, the drain, what the inspection report found, and the next steps that included, that the next steps would be, and assessment schedule would need to be updated.
Because we asked, we discussed this in May of last year.
I believe, I believe it may have been May of last year.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so which comes first here? The new assessment schedule? Or the tendering for the engineering work? Or do those two go on a parallel track? Because we're basically authorizing the superintendent to perform the work, and not just to tender it. I mean, the briefing note tells us that the first thing that happens is that the assessment schedule is created. And I can understand there being a new assessment schedule, because there's been some planned sales. So are we, do we get, do we get two tracks going at the same time here? And at what time do we come back to the people on the assessment schedule and say, okay, here's the amounts that you're gonna be responsible for? I mean, we have to have the assessment schedule before we can tell them what their amounts are, and we have to have, I can understand why we're doing the tendering, but bothers me that the motion is saying, perform the necessary work.
Required under section seventy-six.
Under section seventy-six, which is to update the assessment schedule.
To update, all we're doing is updating the assessment schedule.
Before, so, so an engineer needs to be appointed to create an assessment schedule.
Yes.
That's what the recommendation is saying. We want to tender for engineer services to develop a new assessment schedule.
Ah, okay.
What is, what, what is actually presently in existence along that drain.
Okay, so it's not field work engineering, it's the assessment sc, engineering to create the assessment schedule. Okay, I feel better, no.
And there's, and, and there still may be field work involved in order to.
Yeah.
Determine, determine that.
Okay, Councilor.
If I could just add one thing, just for clarification, that last item put the short or long-term memory issue. If you recall, the assessment of the engineering in the South Dundas Drainage Park, that we had to deal with three years ago, when a person thought they were being unjustly charged based on inquiries, as opposed to assessment of the drainage.
Yeah.
And it came back, so it's, it's kind of parallel to that. We're trying to get that engineer, or that if I recall, South Dundas engineers walked through it, decided not to change it, and then, and then there was a new engineer appointed by South Dundas, and then it still came back to this table. Does that make sense? I'm just, from what I recall, and that's, that's what we're going through here, to get, to get the assessment. To get the assessment done, right? And that we know how much each land and work, and they could be, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Just, just to be clear then, just, so all we're asking him to do is to basically prepare a report that, that justifies, and I'm gonna take this right out of here, justifies a variation of the assessment for maintenance and repair of the drain. That's all we're asking.
What, what, what we, what we are asking the engineer to do is to take a nineteen seventies assessment schedule, that let's say had ten property owners on it, and create a new assessment schedule that would have the potentially fifty property owners that are now on there. Because when lands were sold and subdivided, nothing was updated. So what we're doing is getting that all updated, and a new assessment schedule, so that we can provide all of the property owners that new assessment schedule, so they would know that if the work costs X amount, they would be charged X.
Okay, now who's paying for this? The cost of this is one hundred percent of the municipality, or does it get back?
It is the, it, it, it is the cost of the benefiting owners.
It'll be, so it'll, the cost of this will be.
Goes back to the drain.
Okay.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So the recommendation moved in secondary? All in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. So item seven I, the Vegas Brown Municipal Drain, there's a recommendation here. Is there a move for the recommendation? Councilor Smale and a secondary, Councilor Morrell, that committee recommends that council accept the recommendation of the drainage superintendent, the township abandoned the existing drain and bylaw through section eighty-four of the Drainage Act, and direct staff to tender for engineering services. Are there any questions for staff? Deputy Mayor?
So, background, Greer Galloway has reviewed the status of the Vegas Brown drain. Is this the nineteen seventy-four review we're talking about, or did they do that more recently?
Greer Galloway reviewed that probably in, in late twenty seventeen or early twenty eighteen.
So more recently?
Yes.
Okay. And their findings are the same as from nineteen seventy-four?
When they, when they reviewed the file, they found the nineteen seventy-four findings.
Okay, 'cause what I don't see is a letter from them, like we see in the Connel drain, given more current than nineteen seventy-four. This is from Mr. Flatman in nineteen seventy-four.
Correct. I, I, I provided Greer Galloway's comments in my background.
Is there a copy available of their actual report or, or letter?
Is, is, is the feeling that I've somehow not provided accurate information?
My, my only concern, this is coming out of reading the tribunal's report to the township, or not, report to the town, to the trib, the tribunal's findings with respect to a prior issue, where it was pointed out that council had not been given a, 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 a full update. So I wouldn't want to see something similar come out of this. I'm just trying to make sure we've got our Ts crossed and our Is dotted as much as possible on these things. So I don't doubt that, that you interpreted correctly what they've said, but I think it's important that, that when it comes to these sorts of things, that we also see the primary document.
So just so this doesn't get retracted, so the deputy mayor's requesting a letter from an, an engineer's letterhead restating the information from Mr. Grant. Is that what the committee would like? So yes? So, so, so the.
I, you know, I, I guess I, I'm gonna disagree to a certain extent there, because I, you know, there are a lot of, many more situations that occurred possibly when you deal with drainage referees, and the advice we've been getting, we've taken one issue that's gone to the full gamut and so forth, and you know, we hire these people. You know, I'm not an expert, nor is anyone here at this table, nor the staff in some cases, so they get the experts, and they come back and they say, this is what we think, this, you know? And so ninety-five percent of the time, advice is correct, and then suddenly we get one issue, and then, hey, we're, we're reacting everything. If you look at the, you know, above the policy implications, that, that comment that's made in this briefing note, Greer Galloway recommends that the township abandon its existing drain and bylaw through section eighty-four of the Drainage Act. This is based on cost implications, passage of time, original engineer's recommendation, and correcting the current situation. So there's four variables that's been outlined. And I am, I'm willing to accept the fact, and I have confidence in the people that are at the table as staff members, that they're advising us in the proper way, and I'm not gonna go with that, the, the aspect that was thrown out.
Okay, so that's two, four, one, A. Councilor Smale?
I don't mean that anymore.
No letter? No letter?
I would like to see more.
So where does that leave me? Well, I just, this is, I don't wanna fall into minutia on whether we're, we're gonna get a letter or not, so we have two, 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 and I don't want the letter, so I'll, I'll, I'll break the tie there, and we will not be requesting a letter on the engineer's letterhead for that.
We already have the letter. It's just a question of tabling.
Well, I, I think, I think that the, we're looking for an official letter, I'm not sure if this was transacted through email correspondence, but the.
Well, all we're looking for is the letter that recommends that the township abandon the drains.
Right.
I mean, the reason, the reason I'm prepared to support that request is because I find it embarrassing when the drainage engineer orders us to reverse a bylaw that we passed. And that's what happened in, in the other situation. We were ordered, we were told that we passed a bylaw that we should not have passed, and we were ordered to reverse it, our council. And I, I just think that when we know that that is a possible implication, that we have a, a responsibility to go the extra mile in our due diligence.
Okay, so committee has not made that request of staff. So are there any questions, any further questions about the briefing note? Okay, so the recommendation that we're voting on is that committee recommend that council accept the recommendation of the drainage superintendent to the township abandon the existing drain and bylaw through section eighty-four of the Drainage Act, and direct staff to tender for engineering services. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the chair votes in favor, and the recommendation passed. So, item eight, council inquiries, no motion. Item nine, Mr. Mayor, do you have a report? No report from the mayor. Number ten, questions from the gallery. I don't think that Sandy the Scarecrow in the front there has any questions. Joe? And we have no closed session this evening, and a motion to adjourn. Mr. Cameron, Mr. Packwood, all in favor? Thank you very much. We are good. We are good.